Time change. Word starts adding seconds. One, two, three, six. Okay. We're going.
All right. I'd like to call this City of Shelton Commission Study Session to Order. And we don't have a long agenda, but we have an important agenda today. So the first thing is we want to welcome Kristin Fabre.
Fabre.
Almost.
Well, I asked six people and we kind of came up with that. So Fabre, right?
Fabre.
Okay. And you're from Historical Society there?
Yes.
And you're going to do a report, looks like a second quarter report for us?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We'll start with our second quarter report. City Commissioners, we're grateful for the Commissioners' continued support of Mason County Historical Society. The second quarter, we've had several new improvements and well-attended events as well. In April, we hosted our annual Downtown Historical Walk with Mike Fredson with about 10 on the tour. We had a last-minute change in scheduling, so we didn't have quite the turnout that we usually did, but it was still a success. There's always such an interesting -- this is always such an interesting program from those who want to explore the history of downtown. Also, in April, our volunteers continue to work on our digital inventory, completing several more years of sessions. And we continue to work on transferring all VHS tapes and outdated media to updated formats in the museum. Museum gift shop was also expanded in April to include a few new items, such as T-shirts with historical images of Mason County. In May, we participated in the Old Timers Fair at Mary M. Knight School in Matlock, where we had a booth selling historical books. We also hosted a program of the History of Belfair at the Masonic Lodge in Belfair, where Lenny Griffin and several other speakers talked about the early days of North Mason County. Towards the end of May, we hosted a showing of The Ring of Fire at Shelton Cinemas as a fundraising event with 66 in attendance. Many people were excited to see friends or relatives of theirs that are in the film. In June, we put up the Forest Festival Queen portraits from 1945 to 2016 on display at the museum, as well as other Forest Festival photos and memorabilia. The Mason County Historical Society also participated in the dedication of a time capsule at the Belfair Senior Center opening gala. The Historical Society included historical photos, articles, a book on the history of Belfair, and the dedication speech to the time capsule, which will be opened as a preview in 50 years and then opened again in 100 years. On June 26th, we had our 16th Annual Downtown Car Show and Pie and Ice Cream Social. This year was our most successful yet, and we raised over $13,000, which will aid in the ongoing operations of the Historical Society. The event had a record turnout of over 2,000 attendees, and we had over 260 visitors that day to our downtown museum. Currently, the museum is in the process of acquiring the Paul Bunyan and Babe the Blue Ox statues from Lloyd Proudy, its previous owner. Paul Bunyan has been a Shelton icon since his statue was originally displayed at Binger's Brothers Gas Station on First Street in 1957. The Mason County Historical Society is excited to be acquiring Paul and Babe to be used for future events, including the Forest Festival Parade Downtown and the Car Show. They're a huge draw and have historical significance to Mason County as well. We are currently kicking off a fundraiser to aid with the cost, repair, and maintenance of Paul Bunyan and Babe the Blue Ox. We have a donation request going out in our newsletter this month, and we'll be holding a potluck lunch at Neyland Park from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on August 20th, where we'll be discussing the project in further detail and taking donations. The event will be under the cover picnic area and will take place rain or shine. The museum staff continues to aid museum visitors with information about our exhibits, assistance with genealogical research, writing historical articles for the Mason County Journal, putting together a monthly newsletter, and rotating exhibits. In the last quarter, we received 1,056 visitors, with 127 from out of town, 37 from out of state, and four from out of country. Again, the Mason County Historical Society would like to thank the City of Shelton and the City Commissioners for their continued support.
Any questions or comments for Kristin?
Can you explain about the Blue Ox and what are you doing with the Blue Ox and Paul Bunyan?
We're acquiring them from Lloyd Proudy.
Okay.
And they need some repair.
All right.
They needed some repair, so we're looking for volunteers and taking donations for repair before they'll be ready to use for events.
Okay, so are you going to be storing them someplace or ...?
Yes, and we have a couple of different options. Nothing's set in stone right now, but we've thought about storing them out of business where there'll also be an advertisement and someplace with security to where they'll be taken care of.
Okay. Sounds good. I do remember Binger's Gas Station. Little girl?
Yes.
We had one in Port Orchard, too, so they must have been -- that caught my attention. You said Binger's Brothers. Did you say Binger's Brothers?
Yeah, there was a series of gas stations. There were several of them.
Yeah, Port Orchard, too, so they're all gone now, so.
Yeah, and I think in the early days, they rotated them through a couple of gas stations and before they ended up with the one downtown.
All right. Did that complete your report?
That completes my report.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kristin. Good job.
All right. Next is the Mason County Chamber of Commerce Second Quarter Report by Heidi McCutcheon.
New York.
Yes.
Or did you want to do the car show report first?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Heidi. She's going to do the second part of it. You're doing the car show report, too?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I was --
That's in the car area.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We're out there. This is a complicated job. You know that. So why don't you do your second part of your report on the car show?
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Okay, again, we'd like to thank the City Commissioners for their support of our 16th Annual Downtown Car Show and Ice Cream Social that took place on June 26, 2016. As I said, the 2016 Car Show was our most successful yet. We had over 375 cars registered at the event. Several others that did not register parked their classic cars around the event area, and we estimate over 400 classic vehicles in total. Over 55 categories of trophies were given away. All makes and models of antiques, classics, rods, trucks, and motorcycles are present. The Mason County Historical Society again hosted a pie and ice cream social, and we had the most pies and desserts ever donated this year. The event also included a large raffle with many donated items. The Historical Society was able to raise over $13,000 in net proceeds through car registrations, raffles, and donations. The Mason County Historical Society also spent close to $5,000 for marketing and festival items, all within the local community. In addition to what is spent on the car show, there are many in-kind donations from businesses and citizens in the area, plus over 2,000 hours of donated labor. The community has really come to embrace the annual car show, and many local business owners describe it as being their busiest day of the year. Many businesses that are not normally open on Sunday even open their doors for this event. We currently do not allow outside vendors at the car show in order to support local business. We estimate that the event brought in close to 2,100 attendees, with 375 of these traveling from 50 miles or more. Of the attendees, we estimate that 15 were paid overnight stays, 40 unpaid overnight stays, and 10 were from out of state or country. Our goals are also to reach for the cooperation of the city, the businesses, and individuals who contribute to this event, the dedicated work of volunteer committee members, the people showing their cars, the volunteer judges, and people attending this event. We want to give our thanks to the City Commissioners and the City of Shelton for their continued support to both the Mason County Historical Society, friends of the museum, and Shelton Downtown Car Show.
All right. Any questions or comments?
No, just that I'm continually impressed. It seems like it's getting to be a more well-oiled machine every year.
Yeah, it seems to be getting bigger every year. So it's exciting.
Yeah, great. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Are you complete now? Done? All done? Very good. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to the Chamber of Commerce. I think so.
Thank you very much.
So Mayor Krantz, Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner Moore, on behalf of the Chamber Board of Trustees, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity, again, to promote tourism for the City of Shelton in 2016. Tourism efforts made during this period include administration and operation of volunteer information service centers, ongoing maintenance of our online event calendar, and then, of course, courteous and professional visitor information services provided in person and by phone. As you can tell, the number of visitors who went through the caboose this year has increased substantially, just over 35 percent. One of the things that we implemented second quarter is to have a video surveillance system in the caboose. So basically, the caboose now is open from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. Saturday, we do have volunteers. And some of those times, Monday through Friday, we have volunteers as well, but we have had such a decreasing volunteer base that it seemed that the caboose was more often closed than it was open. So we have instituted a video surveillance system that we can see from a tablet or a computer in the Chamber office, as well as on our cell phones. It also has door contacts that, as the door opens, we can hear it beep in the Chamber office, which alerts us that somebody's in there. We can actually speak to them and listen in on the conversation. We haven't done that yet because we think that might feel a little bit creepy. What are you looking at that brochure for? So what we have been able to do, though, is if somebody looks stumped or like they need more information, then I'll send one of my staff over there, you know, to replace brochures or whatever and say, "Oh, can we help you with something?" And kind of give some of that one-on-one customer service. You know, the volunteers that we've had there have been there for so long, and Billy Howard was the one that was implementing that program. So as she's been unable to really devote her time to that, this seems like a happy alternative to closing the doors and yet still working within the budget that we have available for staff time, et cetera, to still service those people. So volunteers, though, you know, when they are there, are amazing. They know so much about our community. They know the difference between the National Park, the U.S. Forest Service, state parks. There's so many different types of recreation in Mason County that it can be overwhelming trying to figure out what parking pass you need or any of that. So our volunteers are really quite adept at helping connect people to the experience that they're looking for. We also implemented a Facebook page called Mason County Job Seekers. That has grown by leaps and bounds. Both employers, as well as prospective employees, have been posting on that page as far as credentials and job availability. So that has grown substantially as well. And then, of course, on the Chamber Facebook page as well, we share a lot of different community events, as well as festivals, "Did You Know?" type of information. And in second quarter, the most popular post that we shared that was reshared, I think it was 1,200 times and has like 30,000 views, is a tour of the Olympic National -- or Olympic Peninsula Waterfall Tour. So it basically goes up along 101 and back around through Mason County. So that has been incredibly popular, so. Outside of that, as you can see, we are up visitors, as well as website hits, et cetera. So I think that's all that I have for you.
All right. Any questions or comments for Heidi?
Yeah, so it looks like there's been a real decrease in phone calls. I mean, I may be looking at this wrong, but it looks like the 2016 numbers are actually lower for the totals.
Right. So unfortunately, we've had some turnover in staff at the Chamber office and trying to update new staff on what needs to be recorded. We had had that conversation of you need to keep track of the visitors in the caboose. You need to keep track of who's walking into the office. But apparently, the phone calls portion was not tracked with that. So that has now been remedied, and my hope is that, well, I know that by the time you get the third quarter report, that that should be up to date. That unfortunately is just faulty record-keeping, and it seemed better just to put down the number that we knew was true instead of trying to add to any of it.
Okay, so you don't know if that number, if it indicates more people looking at the website?
Well, the website is down below, and that shows the 10,000 page views.
Oh, there we go.
So that is separate than the actual phone calls.
Okay.
So I would feel confident to say that our numbers are ahead of where we were last year. Olympic National Park itself just posted a record year for the number of visitors to the park alone, with the number of people that are coming to the Olympic Park, as well as the forest, et cetera. In Hoodsport, we served 364 people in one day, which is an all-time high that we know of at the Hoodsport Visitor Center. So people are out and about. It's interesting, I think, that there's kind of a growing trend of get outside and to nurture your nature side, as well as, you know, it's become more popular to go to the Olympic Peninsula as well. So those numbers, I think, will continue to see increase. And when you look at the lodging tax revenue, you know, it's obvious that we have more funds this year than we did last year. So I anticipate that trend will continue to increase.
How many volunteers do you have staffing that Hoodsport's office?
Oh, which one? At the Hoodsport office? We currently have 21 volunteers and two, a husband-wife duo, that basically coordinate the volunteers, who will be there, at what time, et cetera. So a large number of volunteers, you know, and Hoodsport has such a large number of retirees and people that, you know, I think it's a generational thing that the Boomers were very much encouraged to give back to the community and to participate, whereas you look at the Gen Xers, which statistically are the least likely to volunteer for anything, you know, and that's, we were kind of brought up with stranger danger. Don't get in the car unless they know the secret word and everything. Whereas Millennials have, we're seeing an increased number of Millennials that will volunteer for things if they can align themselves with it and find the purpose and the reason behind it. So I anticipate, moving forward, that will, as the Millennials age and become more active in their communities, that we'll continue to see, we'll see some of that volunteer force replaced as the Gen Xers haven't really stepped up after the Boomers have come through. So it should be interesting to see how that plays out.
Yeah, I was just feeling sorry for, if there was only one person, the day that there were over 300 visitors, I was thinking that would be somewhat overwhelming.
Well, there was two, so it was still quite busy. And that was just the people that they were actually able to count as they were coming through. And, yeah, I can imagine with that many people in the building, as well as the phone ringing, as well as, can you print this out for me? Or where do I, you know, it's...
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
I do have a suggestion for the caboose, the volunteers on the caboose down there, because I stare right at it every day. And I'm sure that Steve and Forrest Together could contribute 20 hours each, at least a week. That's a 40-hour week. It's not a full job for them, but I'm sure they could add it into their schedules. They look like they're friendly people, and they're fairly knowledgeable about...
So is the wearer willing to do a match to that time, sir?
Yeah, oh, the match thing. Well...
Since you're sitting there looking at it.
I have been thinking, I have been thinking about more volunteer work. So I think it's possible that I could at least put in some of those hours. So anyway, is that all we have for Heidi today?
No, I want to know, I have a question. Are you done trying to volunteer people?
I'm done. I was just trying to get some...
Okay. What do you have to do to be a volunteer? Is there some training?
There is some training involved. It is very intricate. Like, I spoke a little bit towards the park versus the forest versus state parks. You have a different parking pass, or you have a different access that you need for each of those.
Right.
So to be able to define, you know, you can't have a dog at a staircase, but you can on the Hoodsport Trail. People come in and they say, "We want to go for a hike." And you need to discern, is it a leisurely stroll on the beach? Or do they want like deep backcountry backpack hiking and not see anybody for days? So there's a substantial amount of time that goes into, basically, mentoring the new volunteers to make sure that they're up to date with the questions and have that information and be aware of, you know, some of the things that is not easily accessible online. A lot of people, you know, Google and have a pretty good idea, but, you know, there is art in this job as far as troubleshooting and oftentimes redirecting. Somebody has their heart set on, they're going to go hit Mount Eleanor or whatnot, and then you have to redirect and say, "Well," you know.
Have you ever climbed before?
You can't have, you can't take your dog there, or there's just a number of different things that have to be considered, so.
Okay. Very good.
All right. Thank you very much, Heidi.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Before we get to our weekly commission reports, I do want to make sure that we, the City of Shelton, totally welcomes our new City Administrator, Ryan Wheaton, to Shelton and your new job. So we can clap at this time. This is a... He's been kind of around for the past month a little bit, but this is his first day on the job. And so we'll be looking forward to a very lengthy administration report, I'm sure, when the agenda gets to that point. He said he was pretty busy this morning. So, all right, we have general weekly reports. And so Commissioner Moore, did you have some items you wanted to share with us?
Yes, I do. I have a home's first meeting this afternoon. I have a housing coalition meeting tomorrow afternoon. On Thursday, I have a Day of Caring City Cleanup meeting, and I will be attending the After Hours at Cameo Boutique in Union, if that's the right place. Going to an After Hours.
Put Canal.
Put Canal, okay. I thought that's, I wrote it down the wrong thing. Thank you. And then I would like to invite everyone to come to a reception honoring Steve Goins, who will be leaving us very soon for Greener Pastures. And we will have a reception here at the Civic Center from 3:30 till 5:00 on Thursday afternoon. Everyone, come. Tell Steve congratulations and good job, and we'll miss you.
And we'll bring tissue for you. Yeah.
And that's...
And that's... Tissue and jewelry.
And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner McDowell?
Isn't the After Hours the 17th?
It is. I didn't hear what date.
Oh, my gosh, I got it totally wrong. Okay, never mind.
August 17.
Okay, thank you.
In Union.
Okay. And that's cosponsored by United Way?
Correct.
All right. My week is fairly quiet. I'm going to take some, do some fun things this week, and also, and along with the fun things, Steve's party on Thursday, so. And that's about, that's about it for my week. Absolutely kind of quiet.
There you go.
Yep.
All right, well, tomorrow on Tuesday, I will be attending the MaceCom Board Meeting. And Wednesday, I will be at our annual or semi-annual EDC Retreat. So Lynn Long, is that annual or semi-annual? What should I say?
A mid-year.
A mid-year. Oh. So we might have three or four of them. I don't know. This is one of them, though, and that's out of the Elderbrook Golf Course there. And then, I'm glad that you're here, Lynn, because I don't know if Thursday, we're still having our EDC. We're not. So I'm not going to do that on Thursday. I'll be attending Steve's going-away party. And so that is it. Basically, MaceCom and EDC for me this week. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners. Are we ready for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Well, let's not have that first, because we want a general public comment, period.
What we're ready for, anyway.
I saw the fine print right out of that eye right there. So if anyone would like to speak, this is one of the opportunities that we can do that. So has anybody signed in?
We have, first, we have Mr. Randy Lewis.
I'm going, yeah. A little more than I do. I'm going to be around, so don't start the clock.
Oh, no, the clock, that's right. Let's not forget the clock, that's right.
Hi, everybody. While watching the tape of recent meetings, I noticed that twice, the statement was made that Shelton's debt is between $49 million and $59 million. Although I admire the generosity of spirit with which that statement was made, that assertion fails under closer examination. It is not internally consistent. If you are going to say the debt is between $49 million and $59 million, then I'm going to say the debt is between $0 and $59 million. Now, why do I say that? I'll get to that in a minute. But first, let us have a history lesson. Several decades ago, politicians, some politicians figured out that they could award retirement benefits to public employees without taxing the then-current voters to fully fund the expense. Instead, they incurred a debt to be paid by future taxpayers well after these politicians had left office. To avoid calling it a debt, which would have elevated the issue, politicians named it unfunded retirement liability, then buried this debt in the footnotes under an assumed name. That party is over. The demographic chickens have come home to roost. Retired baby Boomers are rightly expecting to be paid the retirement benefits that they have earned. This has become an unavoidable, high-profile issue. I have discussed the public retirement debt for Washington and other states up at the PUD with the lady who runs the place. So what does she know? She is a financial pro who recently has been reappointed by the governor to serve on the Select Pension Committee for the State of Washington. Under Government Accounting Standard Board requirements, state and local governments nationwide must now include unfunded pension liabilities on the balance sheet alongside other government debts, such as bonds, claims, judgments, and long-term leases. It's the same thing. So here's where I'm getting the $0 to $59 million range. The same reasons you would or would not include retirement debt are the same reasons you would or would not include bond debt. To put it simply, an unfunded retirement benefit paid in 10 years is just as real, just as much a debt, as a bond payment to be paid in 10 years. Therefore, if you're going to throw out retirement debt, you also have to throw out bond debt. Under this scenario, we could say there is no bond debt. Let's call it unfunded bond liability. Problem solved. Shelton has no debt. It only has unfunded liabilities. Of course, that's ridiculous. It's just as ridiculous to say that there is no retirement debt. The fact is, Shelton's true debt is several million dollars north of $50 million. Those several million dollars is a debt that you have to manage. To pretend that it is not is a disservice to the citizens and taxpayers of Shelton. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Wow, that was quite a presentation.
Thank you.
I like it. Okay, so anybody else like to speak today?
We have Ms. Narwin Bogler.
Okay.
Mayor and Commissioners, hi. There are some really good things going on that we heard about today. I want to congratulate you on two specific ones, neither of which was accomplished without disagreement and discussion, but I think that's a good thing, because difference of opinion leads, I think, to better answers. The first one I want to mention is the completion of Lake Boulevard. I was up at the ribbon-cutting, and I heard people talking about children being able to walk safely now to school, about people being able to walk down the hill without worrying about being hit, about less wear and tear on vehicles. So thank you for that. The second thing I want to congratulate you on is the recent reduction in fees related to new building. And of course, I'm going to ask you for something, because I generally do when I get up here. So I'm going to ask you for the link that connects the two of these, because they are connected. I know the city has talked about rezoning areas out on Lake Boulevard for multifamily housing. I was also told that the concern of the prior administrator, when he said this was not a good idea, was that there was no existing transit route out there, and that multifamily housing needed transit to be available. I have my fingers in a lot of pies around Shelton these days. And so I also know that the Mason Transit Authority and the people there are really interested in working to develop a consistent application of what's called transit-oriented development. This doesn't mean that you look at the transit that's out there and develop accordingly. It means that when you have development planned... It means that when you have development plans in the making, you talk with the transit people, so that things can happen concurrently. In this case, for instance, you, you talk with transit, you provide a rezone, and as multifamily housing develops, transit develops alongside it. They are eager partners in this development. Shelton has a desperate need for affordable housing, it has for decades, this was cited in the Poverty Task Force Report of almost three years ago now. In part, this is rental housing. I've talked to people who simply cannot find an apartment, and if you have anything in your background that makes renting more difficult, it's almost impossible. Part of the remedy for this is having an ample supply of housing, more housing stock. Our vacancy rate is currently very, very low. And so I hope with these two advancements that are really good, I think, you'll take the opportunity to link them with a rezone of these outlying areas on Lake Boulevard, so that we can develop affordable housing for people who would like to move here and live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We have Mr. Steve Andrewsky.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, City of Shelton Commissioners, for having me up here. What I'd like to do, if you don't mind, is, as you probably know, I work for a company called Career Quest, and we help people with disabilities in the community locate employment. At this time, we have been invited to come to Mason County Chamber, I should say Commissioners, and speak on this, and we would like to invite our City of Shelton Commissioners to attend. It's going to be held August 15th at 11:30 in the Mason County Chamber. It's gonna be, I hope, an opportunity not only for the City of Shelton, but for Mason County, to see how our agencies can actually help in so many ways when it comes to savings for the city and for the county. So I don't want to share too much here, but I hope you'll come and sit in on it, and hopefully learn some things about how we can work together to better, again, the opportunities for individuals with disabilities in our community. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
And we have Mr. Forrest Cooper.
I better give him a fresh three minutes.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I'm Forrest Cooper, 409 West Railroad and 807 South 14th. The following statement is of my own opinion and does not represent any board or organization I am affiliated with. I'd like to address an issue recently brought before you by staff in regard to relocating the Tully train from railroad. I hear this issue brought up from time to time, and in most circumstances, it is presented as if there has been no previous discussion or public input. The first time I was aware of, aware that the city was considering moving it, was when it was brought before the Shelton Historic Preservation Board. Not long after, and that was in around November of 2013, not long after it was brought before the public for opinion during an open house put on by Community Development in November of 2013, during which the overwhelming opinion of the community was, leave it be. Railroad Avenue is a fitting and appropriate place for Tully. I'd like to read the excerpt from the statement I made at that meeting in regards to Tully being moved with a possible location across from Neyland Park next to Tozer's. November 2013. Tully and the Caboose are on the Register of National Historic Places and should remain where are, as getting on the register is a complicated process with many aspects, including location, to be a consideration. Also, the Tully is not only a national historic place, it's also a main fixture of the recently-formed Simpson Reed Local Historic District, and sits on the former site of railroad tracks on Railroad Avenue, hence the name. Why would we move it, just to move it? Here are some bullet points as to why it should stay put. Historic value and location. Historic tracks ran down Railroad Avenue, that's the name. Vandalism. It's less likely to be vandalized in the well-lit center of town. Public safety. Moving to a park setting would invite children to climb on or around it. Safety again. Placing next to operational locomotives and tracks would attract kids to the danger areas near or on the tracks. The locomotive most likely would not survive a move and would be very costly to the taxpayers. Now, the big one. No need for a roof. Tully is a large hunk of iron that can easily be preserved with a regular painting schedule. Most steel public sculptures and architectural elements don't have roofs over them. Just look at the Narrows Bridge, for instance. Painting is also cheaper and doesn't detract from the Tully and its placement on railroad. It currently sits as if it's parked there, which sparks the imagination of most who stand at awe, remembering a time of when trains as this traveled right here. Roofs also provide a nesting habitat for birds, and droppings can do far more damage than any amount of rain or sunlight. To combat this, netting or fencing would have to be placed around the perimeter enclosing the locomotive. An example of this can be seen at the park in MacLeary around their locomotive. It's not an attractive design for Railroad Avenue. Again, this statement was exactly as presented in 2013, and although a few things have changed, such as the sale of a mill and a possible roundhouse museum, I still strongly feel Tully should stay on Railroad Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You usually practice those things, so you're right on, exactly, you went.
I got sidetracked.
Ten, 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 ten words more.
Took a couple deep for us.
All right, anybody else like to speak today at this opportunity? We have another one later, so, is that it?
That's it. I'm listening.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. All right, now, are we prepared for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, could you please have that?
Consent agenda, handwritten warrant numbered 12171 in the amount of $660.09 to the State of Washington fuel tax, transfer on banking fees in the amount of $146,994.13, and transfer banking fees in the amount of $22,459.94.
Is it a motion to approve consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda passes. Next on our agenda is a report from the Poverty Task Force Team, which is actually called SPAT. So, is someone here to give that?
Mayor, I was gonna provide a administrative update on activity with the committee.
Okay.
Just in general terms, there was probably three major items that were their focus for most of this year, particularly for the last quarter. They gathered a lot of information about the mental health and substance abuse topic. As you probably are aware, the Healthy Washington Initiative 2014 set in motion a number of things, including available funding to assist in this endeavor. The Thurston-Mason Behavioral Health Assistance is a shared government entity that I think it's fair to say had some concurrence, that the services that were being provided historically were predominantly in Thurston County, not so much in Mason County. The governance has changed, and we believe moving forward, there'll be a much more equitable representation of those services being provided in Mason County. They have a $54 million budget, so it's a fair amount of, of funding that could be directed our way. There's been other sort of ancillary topics that are part of that larger discussion. The police, the hospital, and others met to discuss different ways to move from our current structure where folks that may be experiencing a problem out in the street are sent to the ER or temporarily jailed just to be released, and what we can do about that. There's been discussions about providing a detox facility, getting people some of the help they need, directing them to case management and other forms of remedying the situations they're in. The Behavioral Board is currently looking for advisory board members, and I believe there's been some interest within the community to sit on that board. So those are some of the elements that are just ongoing with that, that topic. They've been looking for different ways to advise or be part of that, and there's a lot of moving parts right now, and there's a lot of things in flux, but they're getting pretty well informed on what's happening and how that's affecting us locally, and how we can benefit and provide better services. The second item is providing some tiny or micro housing. They've been targeting different sites in town, at first, looking primarily at properties that are owned by the county or the city, or perhaps properties that are vacant or underutilized. That has, I think, morphed a little more now into properties that may be available for donation or church properties that could facilitate a, something like a tent city, but maybe with permanent structures. We certainly have some of the permitting and regulatory pieces of that in place that would facilitate that outcome. There, they've identified lots of volunteers that would want to be part of that, and that would not just be volunteering time, but materials. The schools are interested in using that as a way to educate children on training, as well as providing some of the labor. The modeling of this has been, another item that's sort of in flux, and there hasn't been a clear determination of how best to move that forward, whether that's a for-profit or nonprofit endeavor, how it's managed, who's managing it, but there seems to be a lot of desire to have sort of the Homes First model as how that's structured. You're aligning people with affordable housing, as well as getting them the case management to help them kind of move into a different chapter in their life. And certainly, the model itself lends itself to providing affordable housing, and that is very crux, is the, I think, the key issue. Just as a third item, the Porta-Potty project has been underway for quite some time. Recently, however, the porta-potties were removed. If you go out today, you won't see those in the locations where they were previously placed. They're working to try to get those reestablished. There were some activities occurring there that resulted in the company that was, we were renting those from or moving those, so the committee's actively working on trying to reestablish those. In the meantime, as you also, I'm sure, aware, there's been a lot of discussion about permanent restrooms in the old Raditz Office Building. I think, generally speaking, I'd be safe to say they are advocates of that approach. There's a lot of details that would need to be worked out, but that has been the goal, I think, all along, is to move in measured steps toward eventually getting permanent restrooms in place, and downtown would be the optimal location for those. I think that concludes my report on their activities. Unless you have some questions?
I had a couple of comments. First, I would like to thank the Shelton Poverty Advisory Team for their work on these issues, okay? That was set up a while ago, as we do all these things, volunteer work in all these areas is really beneficial. They do a lot of footwork on these things that we might not have the time or the money to do. So first, I would really like to thank them for the work that they've done. In housing, I was at a mayor's conference or whatever not too long ago, and what they're running into with housing, basic housing, is that the cost of buying the property and get, for a private enterprise, to get the permits and to build a house and legal size and everything, it, the rents aren't there to even kind of do that unless you're in quite a multifamily situation, and so there's a real need for the $300, $400, $500 a month rent in Shelton, and for private industry, it's not gonna happen very easy. So there's gotta be some partnership, there's gotta be something that we do, that maybe it's a private city partnership on that, but I think we need to address it, because the rents are high and the vacancies are zero. So, you know, I don't know all of the answers, but I do know that same issues across the state are that private can't build the housing functions to meet the amount of money people have for that growing, low-income rental situation, so, I don't know for sure, excuse me, I got something in my throat, but, so I did that, and I did that, and also, the other thing I was gonna say is on the mental health situation, you were talking about, and this is kind of news to me, about Thurston-Mason County being kind of together on this situation, but there may be a possibility to break off, we get our own money, we, is that kind of what you were leaning towards?
I think more, a better way of describing it is that the funding that's available would be more equally spent in Mason County. I think there's been a lot of services available in Thurston County, but you have to go to Thurston County to get those services, if those were provided locally, there'd be a lot more access.
Well, I think, for example, if the city commission possibly could write a letter that in support of something like that with the Shelton Poverty Advisory Team in something where we could get more fund towards those kinds of things, everyone would probably be open to do something like that. That may help sometimes, a letter helps. So I think it's working together, and so those are the two ideas that kind of popped into my head on this, and again, there is a growing need for low-income housing and rents that, but from the private sector, it costs so much to build these things that it's not, usually it's a government or private government partnership in that, and so I would say we need to get a hold ahead of that a little bit sooner than later. So that was just my comments on that.
I would just echo what the mayor just said, as far as the importance of it, and also, I would like to remind everyone of the progress that we have made with our recent partnership with Homes First in getting some veterans both subsidized housing, permanent housing, as well as a shelter underway. So it's just a beginning, but there are a lot of individuals and agencies in Mason County that are committed to that, so, thank you very much for the report, Steve.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, well, it looks like, I'm trying to see all the fine print here on this, it looks like you have another, a part two to your platform today.
That's correct.
Okay.
I was also, wanted to provide you an update on our abatement program and our abatement strategy, and it's been a while since I've provided an update on this, and last time we spoke, I had a list of items that I sort of provided as a forecasting what we need to be working on, and wanted to bring some report back on those. We created the second top 10 list, you may recall that we were getting near the end of the first top 10 list, so we created a second one. We saw it was a great idea, we thought we should have two. And we've been working on some of those sites, as well as trying to finalize the abatement of the original top 10 list. Nine of the top 10, the original top 10 sites have been abated in some fashion.
Six, yeah.
Our goal in last time we spoke was to try to make some sort of contact with property owners as a way to encourage the property owners to abate the second top 10 as just a initial step. That was fairly successful. We didn't get five, but we got four sites abated just through making contact and urging some action from the property owner, so without a lot of effort, we have made some headway on that second list. Our second bullet was the ongoing task of responding to new complaints. That has been somewhat of a struggle, because there's been a lot of them. Two sites that come to mind are at 405 E Street and 333 Cookson. There's been a lot of staff activity related to dealing with some pretty problematic sites there. We are making headway, and we will continue to work to get those through completion, but there's been a lot of other sites that maybe have less notoriety, so that's an ongoing struggle. We, we have some sites that are under voluntary compliance, we, you may recall in our program, we have an option of entering an agreement with a property owner to provide a certain amount of time to deal with whatever the issue might be. There's, there's a handful of those cases, and we continue to work those, and we are seeing some progress on that front. We talked about the Washington Street property in particular, as a site where we had acquired a site that had been abated, we had a lien on the property, and we want to sell the property as a way to recoup some of our costs. That property hasn't moved yet, but we are relisting that, and we hope to realize some of that reimbursement later this year. We talked about continuing to try to purchase these properties that have been leaned, that have been abated, as an option to recover costs. There was a tax sale, I believe it was in January, we attended that. There were a couple sites that were on our list that were part of our leaned activities. Those were purchased by private entities, so we didn't purchase the property, but we were reimbursed our lien cost, so there was some positive activity on that front. The last one was coordinating with nonprofits, other entities that might be interested in rehabilitating some older housing stock. Some of the housing stocks may look a little long in the tooth, maybe it's starting to look like it needs some attention. We have had several conversations, I'll say, with Habitat for Humanity on a program that would do just that, and I think they're, they're starting to move that direction. That's something that doesn't happen overnight, but I think they see the value in rehabilitating an old house, and I think we'll see some fruits of that effort down the line. The last thing I'll mention is just our program in itself, and the options we have with the funding that's in place. We didn't receive funding for 2016, but we had carryover funding in the neighborhood of about $50,000. We do have a number of projects, however, that are candidates for abatement, that probably total about $84,000 when you add them all up. The most costly one is the abatement of the old bowling alley, the Red Barn, 128 First Street. So the new administration- So the new administration will be, I think, trying to come to terms with what options you have there and how to utilize those funds, but there's, again, more projects there than we have funding to cover, and the good news is that there are opportunities to continue to get some of that revenue back as these liens come forward and we get reimbursed. So good work's happening. It's progress.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Steve?
Now, you said you had the first top 10, you got nine out of 10 of those done. What'd you do with the one that was left? Did you add it to the second list?
That's the Red Barn.
The Red Barn, okay.
The old bowling alley.
Poor Red Barn. Okay, very good.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
All right. At this time, we want to turn our meeting over to our new city administrator, Ryan Wheaton, for any further reports.
Commissioners, first, thanks for the welcome. It's been a very nice first day. I think judging by the turnout today, this is a very exciting time to come on board with the city. I look forward to moving forward. We are going to touch base with Proffman this week regarding the search for finance director. We're set up to meet with them on the 15th. I'll touch base this week to see where they are, and then the goal is to have interviews either by the end of this month or potentially the beginning of September. In addition with that, to that, I'll be working with Wendy Thompson to look at the recruitment for other positions, and I will have an update most likely in the next week for you guys about that.
Thank you very much. There is another option, if anybody has something they want to say. This is general public comment. Just sign in right there. If not, we will move forward. So you want to speak again?
Yes.
Okay. Different topic?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Everyone's totally bored with the first topic.
Okay, yeah. Just state your name for the record, please.
Randy Lewis. I watched the tape last week. I just wanted to add my kudos to those complimenting Lake Boulevard. Now, any excuse I can make to drive up there, I do it. Even going up to Eric Shell Station to observe whatever progress he hasn't made. I drive up Lake Boulevard. It's so cool, it's so fun. So for Greg and Steve, whoever worked on it, it's just, and I don't know anything about it, but it's obviously so professional, also, you know, whatever superlatives, I don't know to describe, I'd like to add to that. I did want to talk about the well for a second. I know nothing about that stuff. I'll leave it to Greg and Mike and the experts to talk about it, and then the debate over how and when and all that, I'll leave it to the experts. I did want to make a quick comment on the $1.3 billion being contemplated to borrow for that. I just wanted to say real quick, it's not, it is cheap money, but these kinds of things, which I know Ryan is aware of, you can't necessarily look at in a vacuum. Oh, we can get this amount of money for 1%. That's cheap money. Well, you have to look at it holistically with everything put together. There's such a thing as opportunity cost. Yes, it's cheap money, but if Shelton can afford to make payments to repair a 1% debt, if you don't make, if you don't borrow that money, well, maybe you've got an 8% debt somewhere. If you could afford to retire the 1% debt, you could take the same money and retire a 5% debt. So there are other things at play other than just strictly, you know, looking at the cheapness of the money or whatever. I'm hopeful when Ryan picks whoever he picks for the financial director, and they'll put together some kind of holistic thing based on a philosophy directed by the commission, they'll very clearly explain the financial condition of the city and plans and, you know, predictive analytics or however you want to do it. And then finally, I did, I forgot to make handouts from my last presentation, so if anyone is not bored to death, I'll just lay it down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? You've already, if you already signed in, yeah, just go on up there. And if we could limit these comments to one or two minutes, it would be nice.
All right.
Second time at the top, okay.
Forrest Cooper, 409 Railroad. I just wanted to say some really nice words about Mr. Steve Goins over here. Over the years that we've been doing business down on Railroad Avenue, I've had numerous talks with Steve. He's went out of his way to not only stop in and meet with me, but when I come up with a quick question, he's been there for me with everything that I've ever needed answered, I should say. So I really appreciate all you've done, Steve. You're going to be greatly missed, and good luck with everything. You were a good, critical piece to the overall structure of the office, so if I could shake your hand, I'd appreciate it.
All right. Remember, we are having a party on Thursday for Steve. All right, now, anybody else? Sign in? No, okay. Okay, so here is administration final touches.
Thank Greg, yes.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners. A couple things that are kind of bubbling fast here. We were contacted by Department of Health with regard to, they want us to get going on a water comp plan update, and we have a kickoff meeting they want to have in October of this year, and so I need to do a budget amendment for this year using the water utility funds to hire a consultant to bring on board to work on that so that they can be at that October meeting. Number two, we have been approached to receive biosolids from Mason County, and we've been scouring the type of biosolids they have, running all the lab reports, making sure that it's acceptable to bring in because, of course, we're producing Class A biosolid fertilizer, which we don't want to compromise any of that, but it appears to be a good revenue generator for us to accept others' biosolids, and so we're going to want to make an amendment to the fee ordinance to put in there a dollar value for receiving others' biosolids. And then the last thing is, I have good news. I have in my hand a letter from Kathleen Davis saying the back-end angle parking on Railroad Avenue is hereby approved, so we will be moving forward to get that striped. It appears probably around the 18th, if not maybe a little later. The guys are out paving right now on some of our residential roads, and they'll have to get through that, and the paint machine needs to be tuned up a little bit, but we will get out there and paint that as soon as possible.
Now, Greg, Tracy got to do a stripe. Do I get to do a stripe?
If you want to do a stripe.
I want to do a stripe.
Okay. We can do that. Mayor, you would like to do a stripe?
Well, if Tracy got a stripe, and she got a stripe, I think I do want to do a stripe.
We want a stripe.
So it looks like you got a couple stripes here.
Can we write our name on it?
Just don't. Whatever you want to.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for coming to this meeting. Our next meeting will be Monday, August 15th at 6:00 PM in the evening, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.